All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September work session. We appreciate you guys being in attendance with us tonight. Before we get started, just on behalf of the board, I just wanted to give a heartfelt thank you. Words cannot express our gratitude, how this community has come together and supported this system since the tragic events that happened on September 4th. And so, we just want to say thank you. We love you guys, and we're moving forward. So, let's go ahead and get started with tonight's agenda. We're going to jump right into the superintendent's department reports. And so, Dr. Leduff, you can take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board of Education members, members of the community, all those with us tonight. I'd like to start the evening off by observing a moment of silence for the people that we lost on September 4th. Christina Eirme, Christian Angulo, Ricky Aspenwall, and Mason Shermerhorn. Thank you. Board members, tonight as we gather for our work session, our students, staff, families, and community are at the forefront of our hearts and minds. So much was taken from us on September 4th, but amid the darkness of that day, we found tremendous strength as neighbors rallying behind Appalachian High School. We've seen tremendous strength and resilience among our staff and students as they have returned to our campuses over the last two weeks, and most recently today at Appalachian High School. As we navigate the path of recovery, we're going to be bringing forward to you, board members, items that directly support our recovery and healing alongside the business of our governance team that builds on our previous and ongoing progress as a school system. On behalf of our Board of Education and our school system, I'd like to thank Sheriff Judd Smith, who's with us tonight, and the Barrow County Sheriff's Office for their response on September 4th and their continued support of our school system as we have welcomed our students and staff back. We'd also like to thank all of the law enforcement agencies that support us and continue to support us in our recovery, as well as all of the first responders on September 4th, our fire, our EMS, and all of our providers. And again, they continue to support us as we move forward. I also want to thank this Board of Education and all of our local officials who have provided support throughout this incident. And again, that support continues as we move forward and recover as a community. Lastly, I'd like to ask, if you are a staff member of the Barrow County school system, if you would please stand for just a moment. On behalf of our governance team and our community, I want to thank all the people standing in this room for their hard work, patience, courage, and kindness as we have navigated what I think we will all consider the worst days and most challenging times in our school system's history together. And I know that we will continue to do that moving forward as a team. I just want to say thank you to the people in this room who are doing that and tell you how fortunate I feel personally to be a member of this community and have my children in our schools. Thank you. Board members, as we look ahead, we are committed to addressing the community's concerns about the well-being and safety of our students. And our staff remains available to discuss any concern with any member of our community moving forward. In the coming weeks, we will also be announcing a community engagement process where we will be vetting different layers of school safety, school security, and mental health supports that we may want to provide to our students as a community. In closing, I just want to add that we would not have been able to open our doors today at Appalachian High School for our students without the love and compassion of this entire community. We have extremely challenging work ahead, but today, as Appalachian students begin their phase return, all of our students are in school, and we've proved that love will continue to prevail in Barrow County. Thank you. I do have one action item for the Board of Education tonight regarding the 2025 Board of Education meeting dates. Board members, those dates are before you, and I would recommend approval at our October 1st Board of Education meeting.
Okay. Any questions? Consent? All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dr. Leduff. All righty, next, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Bowen with Support Services.
Good evening, and I thank you, Dr. Leduff, for your leadership in this trying time. I have one informational item tonight, and I would like to invite Dr. Christina Lowup to offer some progress on our recovery at Appalachian.
All right. Let's try to fix this for me. You now hear me? All right, good evening. Tonight, I wanted to give you all an update on the recovery progress on healing our Barrow County School Community and Appalachian High School. Please note that these are beginning steps to healing, and we will continue to offer support in the months and the years ahead. So, we're going to start at the beginning, the first full week, September 5th and 6th. So, on the days immediately following the shooting, we offered in collaboration with GIMA and Critical Incident Consulting grief support for our families at the PDC right here in this boardroom. We had over 300 families attend on those days. The following week, Dr. David Schoenfeld, the Director of the National School Crisis and Bereavement Center in Los Angeles, flew out and spent the whole week with us. On that Monday, he presented to principals, counselors, and nurses, and other staff via our livestream on supporting grieving students after a traumatic event. Also on Monday, we had the first day back for teachers and a belonging retrieval day at Appalachian High School. So, we had about 50 school counselors, school social workers, project aware teams from neighboring school districts, as well as community health providers that were present to provide support for our students and families and the staff at Appalachian High School while the students retrieved their belongings, and staff came in for that very first day back. On Tuesday and Wednesday, Dr. Schoenfeld presented to Appalachian High School staff on self-care and supporting the grieving student. We also had a community resource center that was ran by GIMA. It was available all week at the leisure center. This was an extension of the grief support offered at the PDC the week before. We had several Eye Movement Decentization and Reprocessing Sessions. This is called EMDR, and it was provided to staff and students. This is a type of intervention used in trauma treatment. The School Social Worker Association of Georgia, they're called SWAG. They sent 40 trauma-informed social workers to dispatch from the Winder Public Library the entire week to all 19 of our schools. So, that was our little centralized hub there. Also during this week, our Barrow County social workers reached out to the families at Appalachian High School. They started with the most impacted families and worked their way out to other students. And the purpose of these phone calls was to offer support to the student and families and to gauge the need for referrals to long-term therapy. We also had many therapy dogs, I'm sure you all saw on social media. They were on each school campus throughout the week. Our Human Resources Department began to, and they continue to support our staff, offering assistance through our EAP program and communicating with our staff members other options for behavioral health needs as they become aware of the needs and how to cover those needs with our benefits programs. The second week, we had Gwinnett County Public Schools here. They sent 20 of their crisis team members each day to dispatch out to schools who still needed support. The Winder Library remained our centralized hub. We invited families from Appalachian High School to come to the library for counseling support and connection to long-term therapy options. We also met with bus drivers to train them on psychological first aid before the routes the following week. Because as we all know, our bus drivers are the first faces sometimes our students see in the morning. September 21st, that was Saturday. We partnered with a local agency to offer free EMDR therapy for student survivors and their caregivers. There was also a community trauma presentation with a Q&amp;A hosted by trauma therapists. And then we get to this week. So, yesterday was Appalachian's open house. We had 40 trauma-informed behavioral health providers. By the way, behavioral health is just a broader term for mental health. They were available across the building. We had a social services table of resources available. Our team coordinated with Arts Now to create a watercolor mosaic for the school. And we also had a couple of therapy dogs. And then today, we welcome back students at Appalachian. Starting today and throughout this week, we'll have 40 to 50 trauma-informed behavioral health professionals that are available to Appalachian High School and the Satellite Campus Chief East. And the professionals are stationed throughout the building. They're in many of our classrooms. We have therapy dogs. We provided a trauma-informed script for teachers and several activities to do with students on the first day back. And there's also buddies for teachers available for when and if they needed to leave the classroom at any point during the day. That was today. All right, so I wanted to share with you the providers that have poured into our community. These folks on the screen are the ones that have been present in our classrooms and on our campuses the past several weeks, but it's not an exhaustive list at all. We've had numerous community providers and over 230 individual providers that have reached out to support us so far. And I do want to recognize part of my team. They're not here tonight. I hope they're all home resting. I have six social workers and three Project Aware staff who have been on the front lines coordinating all of this, providing direct services to families and students. And their expertise is unmatched. We are so lucky to have them here in Barrow County. So, we'll be back to give you more updates as we continue the healing process, but I wanted to let you know where we are now. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you so much, Dr. Leduff. Thank you, Dr. Leduff.
Thank you. We'll move on to action items now, and the first action item is related to the Project Aware grant. If you remember, the Project Aware grant was awarded to Northeast Georgia RISA last year, the amount of $1.8 million per year divided among three different school system, one of which is, one of those systems is Barrow County. This is a grant designed to accomplish three things: to increase the awareness of mental health issues among school-aged youth; to provide training for school personnel and other adults who interact with school-aged youth; to direct and respond to mental health issues; and to connect school-aged youth who may have behavioral health issues and their families to needed services. The Barrow County School System will receive $420,000 this grant year. And approval for that funding is for the budget period of September 30th, 2024, through September 29th, 2025. So therefore, the recommendation Superintendent recommends approving additional expenditures up to $420,000 in the General Fund for Mental Health Awareness, which will be covered with the Project Aware grant.
Any questions? Consent? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have one more action item that is related to school resource officers, and I would like to invite Sheriff Judd Smith to join me to talk about this particular topic.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent, thank you for your time tonight. So, in conjunction with myself, Dr. Leduff, Dr. Bowen, John Skinner, and his command, if you will, we have decided, and if you don't know, currently we have, y'all have a contract with the Sheriff's Office through school resource officers for our schools. Currently, as it stands, we have 17 SROs. That includes one lieutenant, two sergeants, and the rest are deputies. It is our recommendation, after speaking, to put an SRO in every single school as it stands, and that would be an additional eight SROs moving forward. That is our recommendation.
And for clarification, that's two per high school?
That's correct, yes.
And one per middle and elementary?
That's two per high school as it stands now. Appalachian, Wanda, Barabassa, one per middle school, and then one per elementary school. Yes.
Any questions?
Do we need to go in and approve that tonight? So, we can start the hiring process?
He can start too. He's can start.
Jordan, you're going to have to hire some more officers to do this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, the earlier, the better for approval on that one?
Yes, sir.
So...
We'll vote on this one tonight.
Yeah, we can vote on this tonight, and you can start the hiring process tomorrow. How's that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all your support for our system.
Appreciate y'all. I know you know this. Y'all got the best dag gum team in the state of Georgia when it comes to this school system because my kids go here too, and I'm proud to be a product of here.
So, to reiterate, the action item Superintendent recommends adding eight school resource officer positions, and that comes with a approximate amount for our school system of $300,000 for the remaining school year.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Bowen. We will vote on that tonight. And just for clarification purposes, that is a shared cost with the Sheriff's Office, so they are putting up quite a bit as well. So, again, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate that. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next, I'd like to invite up Ms. Houston with Business Services.
All right. As hard as it is to think about anything else, I do have to bring up regular business. So, we will try to get this through House Bill 581. I want to introduce this to you just as an informational item for us just to talk about. All right. Sorry about that. House Bill 581 establishes a statewide floating homestead exemption that limits the annual increase in property tax assessments on homesteaded properties to the inflation rate of the previous year. So, for example, if a home increases in value by 5% but the previous year inflation rate is only 2%, the home will only be valued at 2% more of the previous year. This will be voted on by our citizens in November, and the school system only has one opportunity to opt out of this bill. Now, before we go any further, let's talk about what influenced our legislators to create this bill. It was exactly what influenced this board to create our new age-based tax exemption, two years of values increasing about 25% each year. You addressed this issue for our citizens and our seniors, and we have proposed a very generous tax exemption. We don't have to do both right now. We have one opportunity to opt out of this and maintain our local control over our tax digest and look to do something like this in the future. So, let's take a look at the school system's finances as they stand right now. Property taxes account for 32% of the general fund revenue. And so, in 2024, that was 62.4 million, and 2025, 65.2 million. One mil of tax is equivalent to $4.2 million, which is really equivalent to about 42 teachers. For fiscal year 2025 budget, our salaries and benefits were about $180 million. The QBE, or our state funding, covered about $120 million of that. Other income covered $12.8 million of that. So, that left $46.8 million to be covered by property taxes, which is equivalent to about 11.13 mils. Then we have our maintenance expenses, which is $17.6 million. QBE, or state funding, covers $3.9 million of that. So, we have $13.6 million that is left to be covered by property taxes, which is equivalent to 3.25 mils. For transportation, $12.9 million is the expenditures, less QBE, or state funding of 3.2, so to be covered by property taxes, is 9.6 million. So, that's about 2.3 mils. And then all other contracted services such as SROs, substitute teachers, instructional supplies, communications, copiers, insurance, et cetera, is about $10.7 million, and so that's equivalent to 2.55 mils. So, when you add it all up, total property taxes needed is $80.9 million to run the school system as it is today, and that's equivalent to 19.23 mils. So, for fiscal year 2025, our millage rate was 15.5 mils for property taxes, and then we used 15.7 million of our fund balance, which is equivalent to the 3.73 mils. GSSA sent us a template to use to look at the potential impact of House Bill 581. And if you want to look at tax year 2024 with me, 40% value of property with a homestead is $2.1 billion. And then the percent over last year, the actual percent over last year increase in those values is 6.2%. However, the CPI, Consumer Price Index, was only 4.1. So, that's what we would have been limited to, was the 4.1. So, our current revenue off of this is $33 million. But after our new homestead valuation using the CPI from the previous year, our current revenue would be $32.4 million. So, we would have a loss of $675,000 if this House Bill was, if we were doing this House Bill right now, if it had been approved and we didn't opt out. Now, 675, you say that might not be a whole lot, but look at those previous years. For 2023, it was 5.7 million. For 2022, 2.6 million. So, overall, the 10-year, the total for 10 years was $19 million that we would have lost had we, had this House Bill been implemented back in 2015. And this is just a year-by-year difference. This does not account for a cumulative effect of our digest decreasing every year. So, we know that 32% of our revenues come from property taxes. If we lose tax income and we want to maintain our current workforce and current level of services, we don't have anything we can sell to make up for those losses. So, we have to maintain that revenue stream. For 2024, with House Bill 581 implemented, we would have lost $676,000. Instead of our millage rate being 15.5, we would have had to pass a 15.82 millage rate. So, we would have had to increase our millage rate to get those revenues. For 2023, to cover the loss, we would have had to increase our millage rate by 3.53 mils to cover 18.82 rather than the 15.298 that you passed. But look at 2021. The state only allows us to set the millage rate to 20 or below. So, we would be in trouble in 2021. And then 2018, we would have needed 22.37 as our millage rate. So, definitely would have had to cut services back then. But Barrow County is different. Our board listened to our taxpayers. The board voted for substantial exemption to our seniors in September of 2023 before House Bill 581 was introduced. If this passes in November, our seniors who are eligible would be better off with the tax exemptions that the board initiated and voted for than House Bill 581. Our seniors' home values will be frozen if they are eligible for the tax break. We wouldn't have to worry about that increase every year. So, our board has already fixed the problem for our seniors. Now, I'll say this again later, but House Bill 581 is a good bill for some other districts that have not imposed a large exemption for their seniors. We really don't know the impact of our senior exemption. So, let's wait to see what that is and then react in a fiscally responsible way. I'm repeating myself, I know, but when we give up funds for an exemption, we either need to cut services and/or personnel, or we would need to increase the millage rate for those paying taxes. Who or what do we cut, or do we increase taxes? Our current millage rate is 15.5. One more mil on a $300,000 home is $120 a year. And another mil, one more mil on a $400,000 home is an additional $160 a year. So, this is the current legislation that we have on our ballot coming in November. The Board of Education voted on a tax relief for our low- to mid-income seniors. That will be voted on in November. House Bill 581, the property value cap, the one that I just talked about. And House Bill 808 is the ad valorem tax exemption. So, just a recap of our age-based tax exemption on the ballot in November. Our current exemption, earned income is, our current exemption covers earned income of $36,450. And then it also covers social security and retirement income of $91,000, and that adjusts every year. So, total income could be $128,000. You get an $80,000 exemption, which covers a $200,000 home. So, what we're requesting of our taxpayers is if you become age 62 to 70, your earned income can go up to $60,000 plus your social security retirement income for a total income of $151,000, and the exemption amount would move to $140,000, which would cover a $350,000 home. For 70 and over, the earned income could be up to $113,000 plus your social security retirement for a total income of $204,728, and your exemption amount would be unlimited for up to five acres. The estimated impact, and again, we talk about this all the time. We don't know what the actual impact's going to be, but it's about $4 million, we're anticipating about $4 million of lost tax revenue, which is equivalent to about 40 teachers. House Bill 808 is also on the ballot in November. It's personal property tax exemption. This tax exemption is on tangible personal property increase that will increase from $7,500 to $25,000. Personal property includes furniture fixtures and machinery, equipment, inventory, and other property used in a business, as well as aircraft and boats owned by an individual or corporation. In 2024, we have 1,182 personal property tax returns, so the potential impact is $320,000 loss in revenue, which is equivalent to about three teachers. Some will say that our growth in Barrow County will cover these reductions in our tax digest. In 2024, $177.5 million, this is the 40% taxable value, was added to the digest. That amounted to $2.7 million in new taxes. The potential impact of House Bill 581 was $676,000. Had that been the only new bill, we could say that growth could have covered this for us in 2024. However, Barrow is different. We, you used your power of local control to respond to what our community needed at the time. We are planning on a $4 million in tax reduction for the senior tax exemptions, then another $320,000 reduction for House Bill 808 that I just talked about. The new growth will not cover these losses. It may not be the time to add to our tax digest struggles. So, the pros of House Bill 581. It reduces the tax burden on all our homeowners. School system and local governments can opt out. That's a pro of House Bill 581. And it's a great bill for counties with more businesses and industry and that are not currently implementing a new age-based tax exemption. The cons of House Bill 581 is perpetuity. We can never change this rule in the future if we don't opt out. We only have one opportunity to do that. Opting out allow Barrow's county school system to maintain local control over our property tax policies, enabling us to tailor tax rates and exemptions to our specific community needs and fiscal conditions. This bill has little to no impact on our Barrow County low- to mid-income seniors with homes under $350,000. Their values will be frozen once they receive the age-based tax exemption. And another con of House Bill 581 is our millage rates will more than likely increase. So, the board has a consideration. We can opt out, see what the impact of the age-based tax will be on our tax digest, and create our own legislation that we can change down the road as needed. This vote would need to take place early January, and we will conduct three public hearings for a final vote prior to March 1st. And that concludes that presentation. If you have any questions, please ask them. If you want to wait till another time, that would be fine, too.
Jennifer, can we go back to the slide that shows how much the millage rate increase would be on a 300, it was like $120 a year? It's in there somewhere. But anyway, it was approximately $120 a year as an increase of a mil, right, on a $300,000 house? And on a $400,000 home, it's $160, which would be $15 a month, or $10 a month for the $300,000 house, which would be added to their school taxes.
Their current school tax. Yes, ma'am.
Current school taxes.
Yes, ma'am.
I hate tax increases. I really do. I wish we could figure out some way to not do that. But I think this takes some more discussion, and it may be that once, once the election's over and we see if the senior exemption passes, then we'll be in a much better position to make a decision on this.
Absolutely. This was just information to get you guys talking about it. I'll probably present it a few more times before the end of the year so you can get comfortable with your decision and ask any questions that you need to ask. Let me research anything that you want me to research so we can get the right decision made on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, unfortunately, I have one more boring action item. During our During our ratings evaluation in May of 2023, Standard and Porch discussed how their rating was based on solid management practices with conservative budgeting oversight, however noted that we did not have a policy that denotes guidelines for debt types, amount, or duration. Tom Owens and my team worked on this policy, and we believe it will cover the concerns they noted. So this is a new debt policy for the school system. It will allow us to maintain a sound fiscal position, provide goals, guidelines, and conditions for the issuance of debt, as well as demonstrating a commitment to long-term capital and financial planning. Do y'all have any specific questions? You want me to go into more detail, or are we good?
Any questions?
It will just sit on the table for review for a month?
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Can we put it on the table?
Yes.
Everybody good with that?
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Perna with System Operations.
Good evening. We'll start with a, an update on our Performing Arts Center. And we're making good progress there. We've got the building closed in. Windows have started at the building. And then, of course, we've got a courtyard area there that's underway that sits behind the Performing Arts Center and gets people from Bassa One down, down to Performing Arts Center. Also saw the tennis courts there. They've got the gravel in place for that. So moving right along, on schedule there with that project. Okay. Our first action item tonight, we're asking the superintendent to recommend the lease of a temporary classroom pod unit to support the immediate classroom needs of Appalachian High School. Summary for this, the former Bethlehem Elementary School is serving students. That began today. GMA and FEMA resources are being utilized to locate a temporary five-classroom pod at the rear of the Appalachian High School campus. The goal is to have this unit ready for students on Monday, September 30. We expect costs associated with these plans, upwards of $250,000, to be reimbursed after an emergency grant application is completed and approved. The plan described above is a Phase 1 approach for the provision of temporary classrooms. Phase 2 would have larger pods coming after the first of the year, and this would allow students to return to the Appalachian campus from the former Bethlehem Elementary School. The financial impact associated with this item, it's anticipated, but I do want to point out, not guaranteed, that various funds will be available for this project, including state and federal emergency response dollars in addition to local funds. A declaration of a state of emergency by the Board of Commissioners allows for a waiver of state procurement policy associated with this item. So far, a purchase order in the amount of $162,213 has been issued for the pod itself. This includes delivery, setup and removal. Additional costs for power, utilities, technology, et cetera, are anticipated but not yet known. The monthly lease payment is approximately $10,000. And so we're asking the superintendent to recommend the lease of a temporary classroom pod unit to support the immediate classroom needs of Appalachian High School.
Any questions? Consent?
We would like to see if we could get that approved tonight, if possible.
We'll vote on that tonight.
We would also like a vote on this next item tonight, if possible. We're asking the superintendent to recommend the lease of two mobile classroom pod units and the site prep and utilities work, complete install, interior, exterior finish, and site improvements associated with placement of these units, including accommodation for demolition and replacement of the greenhouse. 30,000 square feet of building space is no longer available for use at Appalachian High School. The lease of two mobile classroom pod units at approximately 15,000 square feet each will count for this unavailable space. The goal is to have the units in place and ready for students after the first of the year. Each of these units would include 14 rooms, teacher workroom, admin space, and restrooms. In November of 2021, the Board of Education approved Charles Black Construction as construction manager for non-state funded projects, including classroom pods and mobile units. Projects over $75,000 in value are to be brought to the Board of Education for approval. And so for the financial impact associated with this item, it is anticipated, again, no guarantee, that various funds will be available for this project, including state and federal emergency response dollars in addition to local funds. A declaration of state of emergency by the Board of Commissioners allows for a waiver of state procurement policy. A 60-month lease at approximately $34,000 per month, per unit through modular solutions, and a guaranteed maximum price of $3,150,000 through Charles Black Construction for coordination and support of the complete install of the unit to include utilities, grading, interior, exterior finish, site improvements, and other provisions. Comes out to a lease total of $4,080,000. And again, the guaranteed maximum price of $3,150,000. So again, we ask for your vote tonight on a recommendation, asking the superintendent to recommend the lease of two mobile classroom pod units and site prep, utility work, complete install, interior, exterior finish, and site improvements associated with placement of these units at Appalachian, including accommodation for demolition and replacement of the greenhouse.
Any questions?
Would it be cheaper just to buy them instead of lease them?
It's.
That's a lot of money for a year.
It is. It's an equivalent price, Ms. Stevens, that we found. And we haven't negotiated terms, but there is an option or could be an option to potentially purchase these units. But it's really a lot about time and timing and trying to get these units in place by the first of the year. That's a very accelerated timeframe for this type of project.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll vote on this one tonight.
Please, thank you. Okay, our third item. A mobile classroom pod is needed to accommodate growth at Wyandotte Barrow High School. This pod would be in place by the start of the 2025, 2026 school year, and will include 14 rooms, teacher workroom, admin space, and restrooms. In April of this year, the Board of Education approved a guaranteed maximum price for site work and utilities associated with the installation of this classroom pod at Wyandotte Barrow High School. Again, in November of 2021, the Board approved Charles Black Construction as construction manager for non-state funded projects, including pods. Projects over $75,000 in value are to be brought to the Board of Education for approval. This classroom pod is needed to accommodate growth. A guaranteed maximum price of $3,300,000 has been established and will be funded through SPOST. So we're asking the superintendent to recommend a guaranteed maximum price of $3,300,000 to purchase a mobile classroom pod for Wyandotte Barrow High School. This price includes delivery and installation, as well as accommodation for demolition and replacement of the greenhouse. And we would also appreciate a vote, or ask for a vote on this item tonight as well.
Any questions? We'll vote tonight.
Thank you. Okay. My final item tonight. If you all recall, an agreement was developed in 2019 between the school system and the Barrow Community Foundation to proceed with capital project improvements to the campus at C-FIT. As the project scope was further defined, an amendment to the original agreement was signed in the spring of 2023. An additional amendment was executed at the June 4, 2024 Board of Education meeting to extend the date of transfer of ownership and operation of the park from the Barrow School System to the Barrow Community Foundation to December 31, 2024. The Barrow Community Foundation has asked for an extension of time beyond this date. We anticipate a financial impact associated with this item of approximately $45,000 in operational cost. This is for lawn care, landscaping, pest control, custodial services, utilities. And so that's the cost, anticipated cost of those items for the duration of the requested extension, which would be from January 1, 2025 to June 30, 2025. I would like to ask Chris Maddox with the Barrow Community Foundation to please step forward, and he'd like to say a few words about this item as well.
Sorry. Thank you, Joe, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you. Board members, thank you. My name's Chris Maddox, as I already mentioned. Some of you know me a little better than others. But I am the chairman or the co-chair of the Barrow County Community Foundation or the C-FIT Park Committee. First, before I go into why we're asking for the extension, first, I think we can all agree the park was an amazing, outstanding success. I hope you will agree to that. I drove by there this evening from work to here, and it was packed. So thank you for all your input on that. But I want to give you a quick backstory to the origins of the park. Maybe a bit of a refresher for some of you, but maybe better for some of the newer members of the board to understand where this project came from. The concept of this park was championed by Dr. McMichael, Lynn Stevens, and other members of the board, members of the staff, community members over five years ago. A committee was formed of staff and board members, again, as well as community leaders. The original estimate on this park was $4 million. That was pre-COVID, pre-everything. The original estimate was $4 million, but again, along came COVID, supply chain issues. And pretty quickly, we realized it was going to take a lot more than that to complete all the phases on the wish list. The current estimate to complete the park would be north of $8 million. We're still working on that. But what you see today, or with that as a backdrop, the decision was made to complete Phase 1. What you see on the ground today, that's Phase 1 of what we now call Wynder Legacy Park. The foundation raised over $5.5 million, including large donations that we greatly appreciated from Barrow County and the city of Wynder. Phase 1 is now substantially complete and substantially paid for. There's a remaining bill on my desk that we will fund the school system for in the next couple of days. I'm here to do two things. I'm here to ask first, or thank you first, for the outstanding job y'all have done thus far, helping us manage the, not helping us, you managed, the staff here managed the process of building the park. The foundation just paid for it. So thank you for an outstanding job to get us where we are today. Secondly, I'm respectfully here to request an extension on the MOU until the end of June 25. There are still many decisions that need to be made between all the stakeholders of this park around operations, ownership, maintenance, et cetera. A lot of things still got to be decided. That will take some time, and we need a little bit more time, but I think we can do it by the end of June. But the whole purpose here is to ensure the ongoing success and, more importantly, the sustainability of the park. Again, I appreciate you listening to me. I appreciate the time. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer. If not, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate that. So we are asking the superintendent to recommend amending the agreement with the Barrow Community Foundation to extend the date by which ownership and operation of the park would transfer from the Barrow County School System to the Barrow Community Foundation from December 31, 2024 to June 30, 2025.
Consent?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Moten with Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, Dr. Leduff and members of the board. I agree with Dr. Leduff's opening statement, "Love will prevail for Appalachian and the community." I will report on the return to school. If you'll take a look at the screen as I share some highlights with you, you will see the work that has been done to bring students and staff back to Appalachian High School. I will summarize some of that information for you as those photographs continue to scroll on the screen. So I begin by expressing gratitude for the work of our community, our teachers, our parents, and experts who have ensured that we had systems and resources in place to support students and parents with an approach and a timeline that has helped students begin the process of returning to Appalachian High School. During the week of September 16 through the 20th, Appalachian High School staff had time to plan and to get the necessary support to return to their duties and responsibilities. Staff members led a digital check-in with students on September 12. And there were smiles, and students appreciated seeing staff members, even if it was on the screen. September 23 through 27 actually began further phasing in of returning to school. On yesterday, September 23, there was an open house session to welcome students and families back to Appalachian that was held from 9:00 AM to noon on yesterday. All minds, all hands, and all hearts in this community were on deck across this school system. The pictures are a testament to that. Parents and students will welcome back to the main campus and to what has opened as Chi East, formerly Bethlehem Elementary School, formerly the alternative school. It is now branded, open, and ready for students, Chi East. September 24 through, September 24 through October 4, students will attend schools for half-days to help them ease back into the routine of a comfortable learning space. Again, we will have students at Appalachian High School. We will have students at Chi East. And we will also have some students who will be learning virtually. At Chi East, we have our social studies teachers. Classes will be held in the building, and students will be transported by bus. Also on yesterday, it was beautiful because we had parents who were able to ride from Appalachian High School over to Chi East with their students on the bus. So they were able to see the amount of time it would take for students to go, be transported over for their social studies classes. This is a temporary learning option for students with the transport to Chi East. As Mr. Perno alluded to, our goal is to have students adjust to their learning space by January 2025. Schools started at 8:15 AM this morning with shortened periods until a dismissal at about 12:40 today. Again, transportation was provided for students. Our attendance today, I wanted to give you an update on that. On September 3, our attendance was 93.11%. And on today, our attendance was 88.36%, and that was for students. For staff attendance, on September 3, it was 90%. And as of today, it's 95%. So we're excited to have students and staff back in the building. Plans for Appalachian High School students and staff to return full-time will be after fall break, October 14. We understand that returning to campus has been overwhelming for some students, and we are here to support those students. And to that end, we have extended virtual learning options through our Barrow online campus. We have partnered with Georgia Virtual School to provide students with content, so students who are not quite ready to physically return to a building can take classes online. Our second virtual option is Foothills Regional. Our second virtual option is Foothills Regional High School, where we also have a partnership. Students can attend classes virtually at Foothills, and then students who just need a smaller return, face-to-face support from instructional staff can attend classes from four to eight PM at our Russell Middle School site with Foothills, and also with our Sims Academy site. So, we do have options for our students. We also collaborated with the United States Department of Education and the Georgia Department of Education to provide teachers and instructional support staff with social emotional guidance, and to help them balance the support with bringing, with the timing on when to begin content instruction. Some of our students returned ready to learn, and they were all about math, science, social studies, they were ready for the content, some were not, and they'll need some emotional support. And so, we have made sure through our content experts at the Department of Education that teachers are equipped with lesson plans to support when students are ready, and they can balance that instruction, and that is so important. As Dr. Lowe shared, we've had on-campus mental health support, we've had our counselors, and we've had support outside of the district with our students. So, our focus has been on the classroom space, on staffing support, and increasing security measures as Dr. Bowen and our sheriff spoke about earlier. At this time, there may be some additional questions that you have about our return to school. Again, I hope you have enjoyed seeing what that has looked like, and many people in this room have been part of that, so you know what that work has felt like. At this time, are there any questions that you may have, and my colleagues across the different departments are ready to assist with any questions that may come up?
It's great to see the smiles.
Absolutely.
I just have one. I know that y'all are working on this, but my concern is literacy and making sure that our students get the support they need to catch up from being out of school for several weeks, and just ensuring that everybody gets what they need so that the end of the year, all of our children are where they need to be in terms of their learning.
That's a great point, Ms. Stevens, and our focus is on readiness, because students have to be ready to get that literacy instruction, and so, we're prepared to give them the emotional support so that they're ready to get back to the instructional side of learning.
Well, I would ask this, just because it would make me feel better if you can just maybe weekly give us a kind of update on where we are, and it could just be, you know, a text or an email or whatever.
It would be my pleasure to do so.
I just, I think it would really be helpful for us to know that, and also to know how many of our students are back in classrooms or using alternative methods.
Absolutely, I will do that. My pleasure.
One of the questions that I had, one of the student's senior, was mentioning to me his concern of being out, and how that was going to look like for them to be able to catch up, because he was very concerned that he had already missed two weeks of school. What was going to be in place to help them catch up so they didn't get behind further when they did come back?
That will come with our partnership with the Department of Education. They're helping us with pacing the instruction, and also how we're going to be monitoring the progress of the students. Our focus will be on progress, not so much the grades as it is the learning progress and the mastery of the standards. And so, the curriculum and pacing with that will look a little bit differently at Appalachia for those students.
Because I know some were ready to go back, some are not.
Right.
And there is some that think they're ready to go back. When they get in there, they may not, you know, and they have some issues, so that was my concern from talking to him and some of the other seniors, you know, we don't want them to get behind them at the end of the year when it's time to graduate, and they're not, don't have what they need to walk.
Absolutely, and we've been working with the Department of Education. There will be some waivers and some flexibility that will be extended to us, and that will come in some subsequent meetings and presentations about exactly what that flexibility will look like once it's approved. I'm also pleased to say that the calls for parent and emails from parents who have opted for virtual learning have come to my office, and so, I've had multiple, numerous, a lot of conversations about virtual learning. And we, as of today, we only have thirty-five families who have opted for virtual learning from first grade to twelfth grade. That number may be slightly higher, because I'm sure the emails are coming as I stand here and speak to you tonight, and I've accepted two interests from the audience tonight, so I'm fulfilling those requests as they come in, but only thirty-five so far. And through those conversations, some families who thought that they were sure that they wanted virtual learning, through our conversations, by the end of it, they have opted to have their students return in person and be with their peers. Any other question? I'll move on to the second item for the Teaching and Learning Report. I'm going to ask Dr. Salithia James and Ms. Shelley Fallows to join me at the podium to share information on elementary and secondary grading practices, and then we will have an action item following that presentation.
Good evening. I would like to provide you guys with a brief update as far as elementary is concerned, and please excuse me, I'm a little hoarse today. For consistency and conversations, components of this presentation has been presented to our teachers, our instructional coaches, assistant principals, principals, and most recently, to our families that were in attendance at our Boulder Together Family Series. So, we'll go over what is standards-based grading, traditional grading versus standards-based grading, just some grading updates for elementary. We will give you the opportunity to review the learning progressions. We won't practice using the learning progressions, but you'll have the opportunity to see what our families were able to practice and share some resources that are available. Okay, so, standards-based grading aims to provoke, provide a more accurate picture of a student's understanding and skills. It focuses on assessing the student's mastery of a specific skill, as well as the standards and concepts, rather than providing a single cumulative grade for each subject. So, this means that in standards-based grading system, you won't see grades like As, Bs, or Cs, or any numerical grades. Instead, you might see ratings from a proficiency scale like exceeding the standards, demonstrating the standards, developing the standards, emerging with the standards, and not yet demonstrating the standards. And this approach allows us in our schools our opportunity to provide more specific and targeted feedback to students, as well as to parents, about different areas of strengths and areas of improvement for our students. So, traditional grading is pretty easy to spot, is pretty much what we may have all experienced at school. Schools, it's letter or numerical grading, it's assessments that are based on teacher-defined criterias, it's a single overall grade for the student, it's based on assessment methods like quizzes, test homework projects, sometimes often behavior is included. The assessments are based on a percentage system, and sometimes the achievement and effort and behavior is also included. Alrighty, so, just some updates. Fourth and fifth grade students will no longer use numerical grades on student work or progress reports. We have begun to shift our language from report cards to now progress reports, so that we can consistently monitor the progress of our students. And on a progress report, students will be scored based on some of our end-of-year expectations. Alrighty, so, this is a sample of our learning progression. We have not yet demonstrating, emerging, developing, demonstrating, and exceeding. And when you think of the learning progression, we want you to think of it as if it's a roadmap or a learning path. We are taking our students towards demonstrating, and we know that students may be at different rates, some may be walking, some may be running, some may be jogging, some may even be crawling, but we all want them moving in a direction towards demonstrating. And the beauty of this is that our students, we know that our students are in varying places of the learning path. It gives us the opportunity to provide unique and intentional support inside the school so that we can meet the needs of each one of our students. And of course, our ultimate goal is that we want our students to show mastery towards the end-of-year expectations. Alrighty, so, we had the opportunity to bring some families in for our Boulder Together Family Series. Our families had the opportunity to take a look at the learning progression that I showed you previously, look at some student work samples, use the learning progression, and provide specific feedback for why and how they scored them based on the information that they had. And it was refreshing to hear the dialogue and the scoring conversations that were had with our parents, and how even our parents were able to come in agreement to exactly how our teachers in the classrooms would also score our students. So, they had a very good understanding of using the learning progression, using some of those student work samples to score the students. Alrighty, we also provided our families with parent resources. We talked about the Parent Online Resource Center at our last board meeting, so we did share this resource with our families, and we were able to calculate how many families were able to visit the website. So far, our online parent resource, we've had seventy-five page views. For our standards-based grading page, we've had twenty-four page views, and for our Boulder Together web page, we've had over three thousand page views. So, we're getting the information out to the families, and we'll continue to share this information to families. Thank you.
Good evening. So, I'm here to give you an update about secondary grading. It looks a little different than our elementary school, however, what we are aiming for is consistency from K through twelve, that we are approaching grading from a mastery stance. So, in the elementary school, we're doing standards-based grading. In the secondary schools, we are using mastery-based grading with numerical grades. So, it's not exactly what we did when we were kids, it's not how we received our grades. And so, I'm going to go over a little bit about that process. We're going to start with just an overview of all of the work that our fantastic principals, teachers across the district engaged in throughout the entire school year. So, this is the product of a lot of work. We started with identifying a need for secondary grading reform. We wanted to aim for consistency, for a focus on mastery. Then, we, as a leader team, our principals, as a think tank, they looked at current grading practices across our middle and high schools, and discussed where we were at and where we wanted to go. They looked at current research and what best practice looks like. And then, from there, our team of principals from K through twelve, all of our schools, worked on developing a common vision for grading. And then, from there, we developed an action plan for what that grading reform was going to look like for six through twelve, and a draft version was developed of this educator guidance for grading that we could put in the hands of every single teacher in our district, and really focus our professional learning around to aim for the same thing going on in every single building across the district, which is really exciting. From there, we gathered feedback from the school leadership team, from our school governance teams, and our teachers' advisories council to keep getting feedback and making tweaks, and eventually revised and finalized that educator guidance. Next, we developed a communication plan for how we were going to deliver the information to our teachers and help them become comfortable with it, and make sure they receive the PD that they need to be able to utilize these practices effectively. And then, this year, we are implementing our common grading practices across all of our schools. It's a work in progress, but I am so excited about where we're at. This next slide shows you the focus areas that we looked at when developing the guidance. You'll see the vision for grading on the right, and again, that's the grading vision from elementary all the way to high school, that we believe grades communicate mastery of standards, and they should accurately reflect student learning. We looked at our grading philosophy, what our grading scale was going to be, which we already had a consistent scale, so not all of this stuff is new, just so that you know, but we did do some refining. And then, from there, we looked at grading terms, categories, weights, the frequency of grades, due dates, deadlines, assigning zeros, reteaching, reassessments, and final grades, with an aim that we have consistency in all of those areas. I wanted to highlight the work in a few of those. The first one you'll see up there is the grading philosophy. The grading philosophy states that grades communicate mastery of the standards and should accurately reflect student learning. Grading guidance supports educators, students, and respective families with equitable, consistent, useful, and timely information and support of learning. So, it helps kids and their families know where kids are at and where we want them to be. That's the purpose of the grades. So, then, the next thing you'll see there is our middle school grade book. This is a big change from the year before. For a while, you guys probably know, we have had a year-long cumulative grade book, so based on conversations among our leaders and our teachers, we have made a change to that, and we will now have a semester one and semester two grade book, and the final grade will be calculated by averaging semester one and two. So, they start over with a new slate in that second semester. You'll see for grading categories and weights, the common grading categories and weights ensure that equitable weighting of individual grades throughout the term. So, how much of the grade is made up of those summative assessments at the end, right, that show that ultimate mastery of learning, and how much of it is made up of those formative points that happen along the way? Frequency of grades and assigning zeros, teachers are expected to update grades weekly, and an M is used to indicate missing work, and when that M goes in the grade book, a zero gets calculated until the assignment's received, but then, that M can be, not that it always is, depends on what that team decides for that particular task, that M can be replaced with a summative grade per mastery learning. And then, the last one you'll see there, reteaching and reassessment. Students can retake summative assessments to encourage growth, but final exams are not eligible for that reassessment. So, those are kind of the big highlights of the guidance. Reteaching and reassessments has been a big, exciting task to take on as a district. It's work that all of our schools have been doing, but we really aim to focus as an entire middle school group and high school group for what we want reteaching and reassessment to look like. So, you'll see that reassessment should be at the appropriate level of rigor to provide a true reflection of mastery. It can be really targeted, and it might not be that they take an entire test for reassessment. It may be certain pieces, and we have some tools that help teachers do that efficiently. I'll look at in just a second with you. Though test corrections can be beneficial following an assessment, this practice is not an appropriate method, so it is something that often teachers will use, but that students will need to have a new assessment, a new question, you know, test that is giving for that particular learning target or standard, to show that they now can apply it in a new situation. Students are expected to actively participate in remediation and reteaching before they can engage in that reassessment. So, we want that there's a task they need to engage in with a teacher, or maybe independently, before they can come in and retake that test. And then, after participating, that current luster is reported in the grade. So, for example, if they earned a sixty-five on that summative assessment the first time, but the next time they retook it after reteaching and remediation, they earned a ninety-five, the ninety-five is what would go in there. And then, the teachers use the comment section to clarify that it was a reassessment. And then, the last slide here is about support that we are offering. It is a challenging task to take on, to make sure that kids have these additional opportunities to reassess, but it's important. But we want to make sure our teachers have what they need to do that work effectively. So, you'll see some of the things that we have worked together as a team to put in place is a secondary curriculum SharePoint site, where they can access all of their maps, those common maps across, you know, for example, sixth grade math or seventh grade science, a, like I said, a handbook for all of that guidance that they can reference when they have any question, like how do I need to handle this situation? They can refer to that. Ongoing professional learning and gathering of feedback. So, continuing this year, the principals are having discussions in their PLCs and their governance teams and finding out what's working, where we need to have some conversation and make refinements. All of our schools have common planning times so that teachers can engage in those conversations about grading. And then, last, we have some assessment tools. You'll see on the right, formative is the tool that six through twelve they're using to administer those assessments. All right. Future work, they're going to continue to gather feedback, refine as necessary, and we are working on developing those. we are working on developing those, continuing to expand our common assessments and reassessments. Alright, do you have any questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
If you go back to the slide where it shows the missing work and it's zero.
Uh huh.
Okay, my question's on that. So if a student turns in, finally turns in the work, it says it may be, can be replaced with a summative grade per mastery learning. What if they turn it in and it's obvious, what, if it was a 40 or 50, 55, 60? Do they get that grade even though they obviously hadn't mastered it? Because a 50 is better than a zero by the time you, you know, average everything out for the semester. Then you reassess it later, then they may get, replace that 50 with a higher grade. But are you going to continue to give them a zero if they don't get to master it?
So I think the goal is we don't want to have a lot of zeros in a grade book. So yes, with an M, we want to try to have the student make up that missing work and that grade be in there. However, if you get all the way to the summative assessment and for whatever reason have not been able to get that assignment made up, that teacher may decide, and it's really a PLC team decision because it's something that everybody on, for example, the eighth grade science team, we want to be on the same page about, they may decide that for this particular formative, they're going to replace it with that, you know, how that student performed for that particular standard. But it wouldn't, it's not, that's why it's a can, because it won't always be the case. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, because I know as a parent, if you're looking through and you know your kid actually did do the work, you know, it's not something they just didn't do. They did the work, they turned it in.
If they did the work, it's going to go in the grade book. It wouldn't have an M.
Okay.
Yeah. It wouldn't have an M.
Even if they need remediation or more help, then they can replace that grade, right?
Not for formatives, we're not going to do the whole reteaching reassessment, you know, every single time, because there's just really, the time of that would be a real challenge. But if we get to the end, you know, teachers do that very informally though in the classroom when a student takes a formative assessment and they're struggling, they're going to spend time the next day doing a quick, you know, review. They may pull this group over here and do some reteaching with them. But when they get to that unit assessment, if a student has earned, you know, a 65, we're going to encourage that student to engage in reteaching and reassessment because those summative grades are a very high percentage of their grade.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you guys. Great presentation, and I think this is a great step forward for us to focus not just on the kids passing, but for them really mastering those content areas. So this is, I think, a fantastic progress for us as a system.
Thank you. I'm so proud of our teachers and our admin team. It has been a lot of hard work, so thank you.
Also, I want to compliment the grading revisions for middle school. Instead of it being an entire year, I think that's a really great improvement on grading.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much.
This brings us to our action item for tonight, which aligns to policy IHA, which addresses grading practices. Our recommended changes include use of the word progress, that the standards-based grading would apply to grades one through five, that the rating scales would be used to indicate a level of mastery achieved on standards based on the end of year target, that the rating scales would move from five to six levels, ranging from the standard not being assessed all the way to a student being rated as exceeding the standard. We would like for this policy revision to sit on the table for the next 30 days for review.
Any questions? Will I agree to let it sit on the table for 30 days? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, next, I'd like to invite up Dr. Kurtz with Human Resources.
Dr. Leduff, board members, thank you so much for having me this evening. I want to reference back to some of the earlier presentations where Ms. Houston talked about the majority of our money going to staff that make a difference in the lives of our kids, or our teaching and learning team talking about the work they're doing to make sure our kids are learning for mastery, not just a grade. And to support that work, the Human Resources team works to make sure we have all the right folks in all the right places. In October is one of our CPI uploading periods, and in that period, we upload our classified and certified personnel indicators to the state of Georgia, and we'll need to sign off on that by the middle of October. A number of metrics are uploaded, including courses taught, certifications, tasks performed, benefits, and those types of things, and it's all checked against data uploaded by Ms. Persing and her department on the student end of things to make sure we have, again, the right folks with the right certification and training in the right places. I'm honored to be a part of Barrow County. As I walked in here, I learned that our team goes above and beyond what is expected by the state. The state expects that teacher certification is the responsibility of the teacher, but because we need to make sure we have good teachers, the Human Resources Department works with school leaders and everybody who is working towards certification, whether it's provisional or induction certificates, members of the team meet with the principal and that teacher and develop an individualized plan to make sure that they are obtaining, meeting all the steps necessary to obtain a clear and renewable certificate and teach with us well into the future. So not only are we trying to grow our teachers' expertise through our teaching and learning team, we are trying to make sure that they have the certification they need to stay with us a long time and move our kids forward. I'm excited to be a part of a team that maintains that process and helps us. I think that helps us get and attract great folks. I think that helps us keep good folks. Any questions about certification update in that process? Alright. As we're talking about making sure we have the right staff in the right places, reopening of Appalachia's required some differences in staff. And to make sure that Dr. Lowe and her team can provide those behavioral and mental health supports, we need to make sure that we have a variety of other staff in the school. So we've worked to secure 18 substitute teachers for the next couple of weeks, as well as a small team of retired teachers this week to be in the school, provide additional assistance, allow folks for some variable support, where I think Ms. Kelly referenced earlier, sometimes we don't always know what we need in advance. And so that's the same with our adults, and we want to make sure we have plenty of support for them to access those things. Beyond the opening weeks, we are looking to employ two long-term in-house substitute teachers for the remainder of the year to continue to provide a variable support, as well as working with Dr. Lowe's team to make sure that we are able to add some additional behavioral and mental health support on an ongoing basis there. With the opening of Appalachia East, it's required some additional administrative, clerical, nursing, and safety supports. We've been able to handle most of that by moving folks from within existing departments. And almost exclusively, those were folks that volunteered and were happy to make the move. And so we're really thankful for folks, whether it's from teaching and learning, support services, or even some other schools, folks have moved over, stepped in to fill the gap in this time. At the same time, we've been able to hire four, or well, tonight we'll be recommending four additional teachers to provide instruction, as well as one instructor that moved over temporarily to support this intervening time. And Dr. Moten stole a little bit of my thunder, but I want to highlight a point here, and that is that 95% number, with all they've been through, and this says something about the staff and the leadership at Appalachia High School, 95% of their staff was there today. That's everybody who could be there today, you know, who could figure out with their health how to be there today. That's a pretty amazing number. That's well above normal, and I think it's sort of a testament to that school as well as this community, and so I'm just thankful to be a part of it. Any questions about the staffing update? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Alright, next, I'd like to invite up Dr. Thompson with Strategic Information Services.
Good evening, Dr. Leduff and board. We have this evening two items of information and two action items for the board. First, you have, as you always have, the communication report for August. Obviously, the September communication report will look a little bit different when we present that next month. But what I want to take a moment, because we've been doing that this evening, is to highlight a little bit some of the things the system has been doing to support the recovery effort and to support the community during the tragedy at Appalachia. One of the things I want to point out is the job that Ms. Valis and her communication team have been doing. They have been doing an outstanding job of trying to keep our parents in the loop in what is an extremely difficult circumstance, particularly because obviously that people want answers immediately, understandably, they want the information immediately, but it's not always available as quickly as we would like it. Sometimes decisions have to get made in a time-consuming manner, and so she's put into a very cross-pressured position with her team of being able to do that, and she's done a fantastic job, as has the rest of her team. What we want to show you is the amount of communicating that we have done with both the families at Appalachia, but for the district as a whole. If you actually go on our website, Ms. Rushton is showing this currently. If you go to the September update, what you will see is a list of every single communication the district has made from September 4th to the present concerning the situation at Appalachia and the district as a whole. Rochelle, if you'll just click on any random one of those, you can see exactly what was communicated to families. Sometimes it's a longer communication, sometimes it's a shorter one, but when it's collated together in one place, it really gives you the picture of how much information has been communicated on a daily, weekly basis to try to keep our families informed, to try to keep them aware of what's going on. If you go to our news section, you can also see similar things under our news area, but it has a few things that one doesn't. For example, it has the joint letter between the Barrow County Sheriff's Office and Dr. Leduff and the Barrow County School System on threats that students may make and the importance of parents understanding the nature of that. So we just want to show how transparent we've been, but also want to show the work that Ms. Valis and her team have been doing. It is greatly, greatly appreciated, and it's certainly helped our district through the most difficult time we've ever had. So rather than go through the communication report for August, I wanted to highlight that instead, because I think that shows the volume of communication that's been done. The second thing, and I want to highlight another team that's assisted in the recovery effort, this is purely an informational item. This is below the purchasing threshold for the board to take in front of you. It will show up on one of Jennifer's reports next month, but I wanted to take a moment to show this because there may be some questions next month when we get to that. Certainly, when we closed the wing or the hallway at Appalachia, we lost 12 classrooms. You may notice, we've had to replace that between the pod that was coming in, as well as what we opened up at Chi East, we've actually had to open up 26 total classrooms. It's complicated reasons why. There are floating teachers, the social studies department that we moved out to Chi East is larger than the math department, so there is just, when the numbers are done, there are more classrooms required. We made some emergency purchases of 14 new LCD ClearTouch panels because we wanted to ensure that all of the students, wherever they're at, whether they're in a pod, whether they're at Chi East, that they have the same amount of technology they would have in their traditional classroom. So John's team did an outstanding job of getting that together. And I will just say, if you're not aware of the amount of work that lots of departments, lots of people, both at Appalachia and in the district, did to get Chi East ready, and Dr. Moten mentioned all the various things that facility has been, but you also forgot it was the Performance Learning Center, and it was Snowden at one point, as well as Bethlehem Elementary. This is about the sixth instantiation, but given the circumstances and given everything that a whole team of volunteers, Appalachia staff, district staff, they were still working on it as of Monday afternoon, the amount of work that was put to get that together, I'm going to just editorialize and say it's the best version of that school we've had. And I'm extremely proud of that work. But I wanted you to be aware of what John's team did to actually get that ready, because we want those teachers, we want those students to have everything that they have that we can provide to them that they would have had in their normal environment, because it's difficult enough being split out. So we appreciate that work. Two action items today. The first is, at the previous board meeting, the board voted to put policy revision JR on the table for 30 days as a reminder. This is a fairly straightforward revision of our student records policy, just to kind of, it's actually a single-word revision. As you recall, federal law allows us to designate certain information as directory, which means it can be used for things like yearbooks, programs, you know, high school football programs, things of that nature. But federal law does not require that we turn it over on request. We may turn it over if somebody asks and it fits an educational need. Our original policy language was a little murkier than we liked, so we basically did a one-word policy revision to clear it up and ensure that directory information may be turned over if the superintendent or their designee deems it educationally necessary. We had no public commentary on this particular policy, and so superintendent recommends this be voted on at the next board meeting for approval as a revision. Are there any questions on that action item?
Any questions? Consent?
Alright, for the second one, I'm going to ask Mr. St. Clair to come up and discuss classroom phones.
Thank you, boss. To augment communications to classrooms, ITS is adding telephones to all classrooms in the district, beginning with the high schools. In deference to the timetable, we're attempting to have the high schools' phones online by the end of fall break. That's an aggressive schedule. We are using the same vendor we have used previously, who has been extremely responsive and reliable and has offered us the best pricing. We've confirmed their pricing remains competitive for this purchase. As the district was actually already in the process of migrating to a new phone system, we will also need to replace the phones in the front offices and offices elsewhere in the building so that classrooms and office phones can communicate. These phones are included in this proposal as well. We have successfully used voice-over IP supply for similar business in the past. They are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The total financial impact is $95,671.39 from safety grant funds. The superintendent recommends approving the purchase of voice-over IP phones for Appalachia, Bassa, Sims, and Wyandotte High School from voice-over IP supply of Amherst, New York in the amount of $95,671.39.
Any questions?
Is this mainly because most buildings have spotty service and not relying on individual educator software?
That was one of the factors, yes, ma'am.
Alright, consent? Thank you, sir.
There are no other questions? That's my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, at this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer, or fully order interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 Alright, thank you so much. We'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you so much. We'll be back in a few minutes. All righty, welcome back, everyone. We've got a few things to vote on, but before, Dr. Leduff, I wanted to make a few words.
Yes, sir. I just want to thank the board. I know that we have asked for things and are asking for things that are a little bit out of the norm in terms of our processes and protocols for approval, and I just want to thank the board for their work on empowering our staff to make sure that we accelerate anything that we need to, to provide the resources and spaces to our students, so we could provide the opportunity for them to return to our classrooms and return to be around the people that care for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the superintendent recommended approving the personnel report as presented. What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Ms. Malouf, Ms. Bradford, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Next, I would like to call for a motion to approve the eight additional school resource officers as presented.
Second.
Ms. Stevens, Ms. Malouf, all in favor? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to call for a motion for the approval of the short-term lease of temporary classroom pods for Appalachia High School.
Second.
Ms. Malouf, Ms. Bradford, all in favor? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to call for the motion to approve the long-term temporary mobile classroom pod lease for Appalachia High School.
Second.
Ms. Kelly, Ms. Stevens, all in favor? Motion passes. And lastly, I would like to call for the motion of the approval of the mobile classroom pod purchase for Wynderboro High School.
Second.
Ms. Stevens, Ms. Hendricks, all in favor? Motion passes. I appreciate all of your attendance tonight, and I hope you guys have a great rest of your week. If there's nothing else to discuss, we're adjourned. Have a good night.